With the, and again, I mean, we're working with the board, with the ambulance board, and that was a recommendation that we would want to see with the fire district is to create a fire board, similar to what we have with the ambulance board. To better our processes, you know, and communication between the entities, with the fiscal, with planning, equipment. That was also my understanding is the recommendation was to create that board. Again, those are some things that are still needing to be discussed with the trustees. Then, as you move down further into your documents there, I included, this is the information that we at the city had on file, that had not been submitted. And again, that's the city's accountability for not submitting that file to the state to be filed in accordance to a 28E code of Iowa. Those are all supposed to be filed with the Secretary of State. So, that had not been done, and we did get that completed. And again, I provided everything to our attorney that I could find on our files. Anything that, what's there now is the only documents that I had access to that had complete signatures. I did not have access to any other documents with completed signatures. And that was also going back through minutes, archived documents. That was, that's what we, so we submitted everything to the state. So, we had at least that archived history of, of the agreements, what was presented for councils and that piece of it. So, we are now in compliance with our filing at the state level. So, once the city and the trustees come to set up a new agreement, then that will have, again, then that will be updated to the state. And that will then show us the current amendment. And so then, it's my understanding, I think it's the 2002 fire and the 2007 ambulance is the complete documents that they have on file with everybody's sign. The SOS does, yeah, okay. But they have the additional ones, that they're only gonna recognize what's actually signed to my understanding.
Okay.
And again, I don't think that there's, I don't know, Chief, I don't think that there was a lot of difference between those agreements.
I don't believe so.
Because didn't they roll basically from one to the other? And, and it seems to, I know that, so there was an amendment done in 2011, and that is when the ambulance, that is where the ambulance board and the city had amended to put a position for the full-time. And that, unfortunately, we don't have, that was my understanding, we didn't have all complete signatures. But because that's what we're doing, that, that was how I explained to them, we're, we're doing it, even though we don't have everything signed, but we are still working on that. We're working in those terms of that agreement. Just in case that there was a question, if you looked at the 2007 and said, well, we don't have anything in here in the 2007 with regards to staffing, I just wanted to say, because there was that discussion, and council did approve the 2011, but then we don't have a completed document. We have been working since 2012, when the, I'm gonna make sure I'm saying it right, the ambulance director was hired. That's, we've been following that process.
I didn't have a, I was looking through, since I only got page one through five, I was looking through that, and I did have a couple of questions, and, and I don't see what I can do. And I don't know if we need to make some changes. Most of it is just basically simple literacy. But like in the very first page, under agreement,
on the, which page are we looking at, on the draft or?
Yes, the draft, but well, I think the first, so.
I'm gonna walk over and take a look and see what you're looking at, because it could be that, if it's the, if one has already been filed at the state, we would just wanna make sure.
Isn't it the same?
So, this, this one's incorrect.
This is your correct one.
Yeah.
So, this is the one that is on file?
No, it's a draft.
It's a draft.
It's a working want.
It's a working document.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. But it was taken from the one we filed, so there's still, some of the information was taken.
Okay.
What we have is a collective of, because during the discussions, and I would invite you, I mean, Chief Sickles is here, Assistant Chief is here, and I know we have Eric on TV here too. When we were going through these discussions, collectively, there were, they left what was working.
Okay.
And then with the revisions, those were incorporated into this draft.
Okay. Well, like on the, the draft, the first page, you have 28E agreement at top, then you have the next title down, recitals, and then you have agreement. Under agreement, the next sentence, the city and the fire district "and" agree as follows. Is there something left out, because you have the "and"?
So, there was, and again, it's, it's okay if I have Chief kind of, sure. I, I think that there was.
Is there something else?
You can kind of tell me. I think there was something that we were trying to, because of how the original agreements were written, it almost showed that there were three entities, but there's, but it is my understanding, it's a, it's a service agreement between the city and the, the rule. And so, they were, and that was the last I had known.
Okay.
The attorneys were gonna make sure that we understood, because I think in 1975, it refers to the nonprofit corporation piece is a part of the agreement.
Which now would be fire, basically, right?
Right, and that's the reason why they're recommending a fire board, like an ambulance board, because the 28E agreement only allowed two, two parties.
Okay.
Is what, that's what hadn't been explained to me.
So, basically, does the, so included with that, the city and the fire district, does there also need to be written in there ambulance?
No, just fire.
Just fire?
Just fire.
Okay, okay, I didn't know, because I thought it had not only rule fire protection, but also.
There'll be two separate.
There'll be a separate.
Separate, great, okay, for the ambulance.
Right.
Okay. So then maybe we can ask that, and I don't know if there's not anybody else included in that.
We just wanna make sure that when we get back with the trustees, and then when the attorneys have had their time to make sure that we understood that correctly, that we have it.
And I'm trying to understand it correctly too, but honestly. Under the number four of agreement, you have the city and fire district shall jointly approve any expenditures of $5,000 or more for the maintenance and repair of the equipment. City expenditures are also subject to the city's purchasing policy, and that's already in the policies.
Yes.
Policy handbook, so, no matter what, everybody would follow that policy, is that correct? Okay, and then under number eight, the financing, number, on letter A, the city and fire district shall divide the operating and maintenance expenses equally. So, is that saying that we and the rule have a 50-50 stay? Or what is that saying?
They're confused by that. And so, that statement is, again, that's currently in effect now.
Okay.
That is where the rule and the city divide the expenses for the fire department.
So, they divide assets on the expenses?
Or just, oh, okay.
Expenses of like supplies and equipment and whatever?
Yes.
Yes. Okay.
But it's my understanding too, that that falls to the apparatuses and the bunker here. So, again, as I'm learning through, because we didn't have a, we have a 28E agreement, but, but there's a lot more details that go behind the transactions than what was inside the 28E. So, what my understanding is, is that the city, on a monthly basis, when we receive the expenditures, then we provide a copy of all of the expenditures for the fire, and, and then we invoice showing a split for those expenses. And then the fire, the rural fire district, they tax, they levy tax dollars, and then they provide a check, and they submit a check to the city to receive for their portion of the expenses.
Okay.
Did I explain that correct?
Okay.
And along with that, as you're reading through there, well, I'll give you time, but along with that, there's also an agreement that we, the city and the trustees will also set aside an amount to go into a reserve for future purchases of equipment.
Yeah, yeah, I think that's essential. And then on number three item, outlined item, basically, the city shall provide the utilities, right?
Uh huh.
At no expense to the fire district. So, basically, we're, we're paying all the utilities for the structure.
Correct.
Right, okay.
Yeah, we only provide the invoice, the expenditures.
For what's used?
Supplies.
Supplies, yep, yep. And then we take care of the rest, correct?
Staffing, insurance, the utilities.
And I gotta make sure.
And all that.
Yes. Okay. And then the city shall continue the established interest-bearing fund for the accumulation monies designated for the purchase and/or replacement of capital equipment necessary. So, that's currently what's set up now, isn't it?
So, we have, yeah, so our, the, the fund component, the, the cash is in the interest-bearing. And again, this would be, you know, we're, it's good for the entities that had a discussion, because very, kind of time, I mean, right now is not the time, there's interest rates, yeah. But I know on the ambulance side, they've invested, you know, additional, when they built up a large sum of money, they've invested that into sort of, they've given a deposit. The fire department has, there were trust and agency, and on your cash sheet, this is where it gets a little bit, the trust and agency, to my understanding, was established solely per the collection of donations.
Okay.
Does that sound correct to you? It has a smaller amount, and so that, and I tried to dig back through the history on that, and.
That's untouched money, because that's strictly donations?
Well, it's, it's not untouched, it's just depends on how during a budget, again, I, so a true trust and agency, it's, it, it has, it's almost like, again, when you say trust, it specifically usually has some type of a legal outline saying what you can only use those funds specifically for.
Okay.
When I visited with the auditors, their, their communication to me is that the fire trust and agency is not truly a trust and agency. It was an account established on our books to collect and keep donations, is my understanding, separate from the fire reserve that was established for equipment.
Okay.
And so, with the donation money, you know, that could be something, for example, if the, the fire chief of the department, they're gonna say, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna buy everybody new shirts or something to that. I mean, that, because those are funds donated for their use, that could be something that, that they could utilize. I'm just going out some examples. Mostly, they don't touch those, and we let those funds just, we let them alone. They work mostly off of grants and fundraising, and running through their fire signature.
Okay, because there is.
That's a correct statement, Chief, right? I just wanna make sure.
Yeah, we haven't touched it for a while.
Yeah.
Last, last bit of money was taken out of the fire, was for the truck, the new truck.
Okay.
And we had grants with that as well.
So, there's, there's three accounts currently housed in the city for fire. The T and A, the fire reserve, and the fire and ambulance improvement fund.
So, the improvement fund was established when the new addition of the building was being built?
Okay.
And again, that shouldn't have been, I mean, I'm, I'm not gonna, I'm just gonna say, it's a capital, it was a capital project, and I believe that the setup that reached a track, the building, the founding, the funds, like the donations and the expenditures are all under one.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Which was all donated money and time, yeah. Whole building.
Okay. And on the ambulance side, with the drafting of that agreement, again, as I understood it, it's been a little near. And then the, the practices for ambulance, so, and, and again, my understanding is, so the fire district, because they've not been able to tax for the ambulance, they can only levy taxes for the fire. But, so on the ambulance side of it, we have revenue, which has been established by the service that they provide with the EMS, with the ambulance service.
EMS.
And I've got that, I just wanna make sure I'm saying all of those things correct.
Now, will that change in the future to come with legislation at, in Des Moines? Um, declaring that.
It's already been approved, it's now up to the individual county decide how they're gonna levy the tax.
Okay, but, but essentially, that, that will be a tax service.
Absolutely.
And at that time, it could affect then, you know, how, how, again, from the ambulance board, if they're, if they're levying taxes, like they levy taxes on the fire, and that could change, we could, you know, look to have to have an amendment to how we would wanna, you know. But again, I mean, part of me is if you're providing the service, you know, maybe that's more towards, you know, reserving them for the replacement of their ambulance. I mean, I like to think that it's a nice sum, but their, their tax levy's not, you know, I, I can't speak to it, I know they have a small portion for fire, so I don't know if the county would look at probably dividing that, or if they increase the tax. We just don't know how that's all gonna come out yet, so. But that would be more discussion that the, both entities would have to come to an agreement on, and then possibly amend your 28E agreement to.
Wait, the time it comes out.
So, who makes that decision? Does the board supervisors make that? Board supervisors make that decision, and the way we understand it thus far, there's three ways that would be taxed, it would be taxed through property tax type thing, you know, added money on that, or a sales tax, or a hybrid, or a local option, hybrid.
And then they'll divide it between fire and ambulance?
No, it's divided.
It's a zone.
Ambulance is a zone.
This would be the ambulance portion.
But the county will decide, the county will be given or allocated a specific amount based on property tax, or local option sales tax, whatever, and that will be distributed throughout all of the ambulance services in the, in the county.
Lost taxes is per, like, up to vote, isn't it? So, if it's a mandatory, it'd have to be, I would assume, vote your property and sales, wouldn't it? Because.
I would think so.
At the next election, if it turn around and the city could, the voters could say, we don't want lost anymore. The local option sales tax.
This is a, a 10-year deal, and then to be revalued after the 10.
10 years, okay.
So, what they could do in addition to what our current local option sales tax is, the, they could run an additional percentage on, so right now we have a penny or a percent.
Yeah.
They, they could look at it to run in that direction, or they could just say it's a certain percentage off of property tax.
Okay.
But either way, the county would have to vote and approve on that process.
Okay.
And I would guess it's gonna be pretty fairly done, I mean, as far as consistent from county to county to county, so not trying to, at one county, one thing, another county, we have the other.
Yeah, yeah. I would, yeah, you hope, yeah. It would be, okay. All right, yeah, and then at number 16, at the last sentence, it says, all notices must be in writing, that sentence? All notices must be in writing, I assume that means signed by the party, maybe it's a typo?
I can, I can ask, again, these are county documents, so.
Okay, maybe ask Attorney Boston if that is a typo. There's another typo there. Sorry, there's another one?
No, that's okay.
I said, I said there's another typo, it said city manger, it's the other city manger.
Oh, yes, 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 that's another typo, yeah. Absolutely. Kind of going back to, I mean, I was thinking that we pulled something from the, more than likely, it's a typo.
Okay. And then I noticed the agreement may be terminated by either party due to breach by the non-breaching party, given at least 90 days notice. And does it give 90 days notice if in the event one party wants to just not renew?
It's my understanding that this is, you have to give notice prior to, this is where, this would be more of a Jamie question.
Okay.
Um.
Because I think that's what.
We had done 90, but the recommendation was for a year.
Okay.
But then further discussion with the trustees, the public safety and the trustees agreed that six months would be, you know, but you have to, based on that six months, you have to go out, I believe, 90 days to provide an intention to terminate, because you wanna update the agreement, or you wanna, because it's my understanding, you can ask to amend during the, the life term of the agreement, so long as both parties agree. But to actually change the entire agreement, like what we're trying to accomplish here, that would mean to say that you would wanna provide that notice, or again?
Is it, um, because I, I just was trying to clarify for myself, because I know that, and let me know if I'm not understanding this correctly, in this current agreement that we have running right now, it is written, because I think I saw it when I was reading it, it's written in the agreement that we had to give you all notice by April, or on April 1st, on whether or not we were going to terminate that agreement in the hopes to update in that meantime until June 30th, so that when July 1st came, the new agreement would just take over, and there would be no interruptions. And I think, isn't that true, that we had to give you notice of termination for the current agreement, because it wasn't in compliance? And then that's why the attorney, as I understood it, used the word termination, even though we're not terminating the agreement as of April 1st. It was, we had to use that, that legal terminology, just to give you guys heads up that, that this agreement that we currently have was not going to be renewed in the same aspects and continue on.
So, there, so, for Chief Sickles and Treasurer Mindy, and Sickles, servants, servants as they are, and then Assistant Chief Christiansen.
Uh huh.
So, for them, they, they're the nonprofit.
Yes.
And they're also the department.
Okay.
So, they're not, you know, they can't answer on behalf of the trustees.
Okay.
And also because of pending litigation, you probably don't wanna put them in a position to say, or us to say.
Okay, I was just trying to clarify, because that's how I understood it to be, that we weren't terminating right then and there.
Yeah.
And I just didn't know if that was a case where we would have that in writing for this new one, that in the event we wanted to change something prior to the expired deadline of this one, that we'd have to sort of notice by a certain date.
Yeah, that's all. And that's when, again, that's what they were working through in that paragraph. And what, has been shared by not just our attorney, by some other attorneys that have looked at this. And there's also, you, you can actually go out to the state, and you can look at other entities' agreements. And I know I provided several samples from other cities to our attorney to work with, and it's a, it's a legal term, you know?
Yeah.
And I, so, I mean, again, I mean, maybe, you know, you could, sure, you could probably re, there's a possibility to replace that with another word. Either way, you have to serve, you have to provide notification.
Yeah.
Um, so.
It's like learning to try the manual transmission. You got a break, and then you get a stop, and then you got a break, and then you get a stop.
It's just, yeah. And it's just, you know, again, I mean, part of the conversation, kind of going back to the budget discussion, back and forth on that, the, you know, sure, we could put that in there, but again, it's non-compliant, because it's a statutory requirement that the city has, the city council is the approval of the city budget.
Uh huh.
But again, most importantly, I mean, this is also, you know, why we want to work out this communication, and why we wanna get these processes in place, because, um, I know for myself, speaking with the treasurer, the Alan Feldman, you know, is, again, so we can have, so this doesn't happen again, as far as the changing over at the city administration, and making sure that we understand what these processes are, that we, on top of the agreements, that we have a procedure. That would include meeting in August with, you know, with the entities, you know, the public safety committee, the wards, and going through a, a budget, and setting that budget with the chief, and everybody's involved. And that way, by the time it comes to the council, I mean, we should be able to be in a solid place and have, you know, those things ironed out as to what, what we're doing. And again, I mean, it's gonna be important from a taxing, and it is important now for the trustees, when they're levying taxes, you know, they have to have that budget in provision, because they need to know their percentage. And again, you know, I'm sure there's gonna come now with new legislation, and that's gonna come with a whole another set of new treaties that you have to, right? So, that's a given. So, I mean, you know, that's, and that's, I, I, the bigger picture is getting the communication and getting the process and the procedures down.
Yeah.
So, we're all in the same page.
You have a question?
So, I don't know if Jose or Dave from them setting down public safety committees have, have you had anything more to add? My only recommendation then, we, we did receive the, we received the acknowledgements of the amendments for extending council's resolution status September 30th, your acknowledgements being in four months. Again, we're hopes that, you know, how the public safety can continue to work with the trustees to set those leaves. The only other thing I could add is that we wanna also have a public safety committee, encourage them to continue, we're coming up towards the year end. I would really like to have, from a clerk's perspective, to have us have a, a meeting with the chief and, and the ambulance board, so we can get a. a meeting with the, the chief and, and the ambulance board, so we can get a staffing plan. Um, they've recently had, uh, two paramedics that have, um, accepted positions, um, and, uh, and again, their, their demand is still high, um, and we're, you know, until we have a staffing plan or till we have that budget plan in place, or in right now, um, you know, we, we can't go, you know, further with that, so.
Is it, um, uh, do you have full-time, an April time in?
No, they're all part-time.
They're all part-time. How many part-time is there?
We have.
Six, or is it part-time?
Six.
November.
And just so you know, we've already been informed by, um, Sandy Haiku, is she kind of oversees the EMS, um, scheduling of personnel. She's already informed us that we will be, um, severely short-staffed, um, for July. We will not have coverage, so we will be, there is a very big possibility that we will not be able to adequately respond to calls as of July one.
That's super valuable reason for that?
Because we don't have any staffing and no staffing's been approved. So we can't hire anybody until we have the public safety committee meeting with the ambulance board to approve it, so we, we just have no people to, it's a, because the July one is the new fiscal year, so.
Yeah, so we have, we, we have to schedule out for a month, so, well, I, at least a few weeks, so not quite a month, but, um, once Janelle leaves, who, um, she's accepted a full-time position just recently with Johnson, she's only, Johnson County, she's only available two days a week, or two days a month.
Hmm.
Um, and so she's gone and so, um, yeah, after July, we just don't, we don't have anyone.
And this is for ENT calls, is that what this is?
Yeah, this is, this is basically running the, for.
Ambulance period. This is their schedule for twenty-four hour schedule, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, but, wait, looks we'll have to, at least where things are now, cut back just, and not have overnight and, uh, maybe have moved out a certain day.
We will have several, um, we will have several days a, a month, there will, there will be no paramedic coverage.
And we don't have any volunteers that are paramedic certified and that, I, I just wanna help them.
Well, we do have paramedic certified volunteers, they all, they're all, okay.
Okay, um, so, I mean, and just so they're clear is that, you know, that, that's, so you don't have your volunteers responding, you know, that, 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 you know, that's the, that's the gap.
So if we don't have that, we have Johnson County, we still be our backup, like we used to.
Yeah.
Or Johnson County or.
It'll cost us a lot.
Oh, I understand.
But yes.
It's, it's Johnson County, I mean, it could be.
But I know that's how we always do it, correct?
Where's available, it's not just Johnson County.
Yeah.
Right.
It just depends on who's available. If Johnson County can then call and then we'd be asking the next available from.
Right.
Whatever.
Paramedic, I mean, we've had one call that had to come out of, well, not us, it was, uh, uh, Chip or Wilk, they had to come out of, what, City.
I'm just saying, I mean, that's where we used to do it correctly, we used to call ahead to Johnson County with me.
We had a mutual agreement.
Right, mutually, yes.
But we used to have some paramedics that used to respond that.
Right.
Do it any one.
Correct.
I understand that. They're still on our department, I wanna add that too.
Okay.
So, uh, that basically as of July first, that's how it's gonna be?
What it is unless we can.
We're gonna struggle.
Try to fill those positions for the loss.
And it's for weekends and evenings?
No, or for any, all, during the day, even during the day, yeah. Evenings, overnight, weekends.
Monday through Friday, where it's set up right now.
Monday through Friday, yeah.
But you still have six of them, I'm not sure why you'd be completely short on that.
We have six of them, we're losing three of them.
Oh, I understand.
Yeah.
But you only have six now?
We have six now.
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
Until the end of the month, right?
We may get, like she said, one of the paramedics, like, give us a day or two when they can, but. They've been offered full-time positions, so we have to be full.
So, uh, so basically, we need to get on board pretty quickly with working out your, working out the budget, is that correct, for payroll?
I think it's a staffing plan that we need.
A staffing, right?
You have to have a staffing plan and then we would amend the budget just to make sure that our budget reflects that staffing plan.
Okay.
Um, and again, and that's where, because you're going from, so again, I reached out to make sure with rage an hour and, so if, if you have volunteers that are paramedic, we can pay, you can have them on a pay, payroll. But once they are a permanent part-time or they're set in a schedule, then that's, that's staffing. So that's, again, I mean, it's, it's, that's where it gets tricky. Cause they do have, um, folks that are on their roster that they can pay. Um, but again, if those individuals aren't showing up as volunteers, well, we're probably not gonna get them to, on a schedule being paid, I'm thinking either, um, because I know they provide, uh, an opportunity to pay them, you know, they provide a stipend for them when they're going out on calls, you know, anyway, you know, either way. So, um, but that's the thing, and I do know that, um, you know, Cedar County has communicated that, you know, they've had to turn down calls, uh, uh, because they're short, um, so I mean, it's, there's a high demand and then, you know, again, just from my own knowledge of living in a smaller community, they do not have staffing and, you know, we lean on, you know, Nichols leans on West Liberty because of the ambulance service, and I'm sure Alisa, and then we have the interstate, and, so I mean, there's a lot of things there. Again, we just have to make sure that the staffing and the budget from our council side of it, you know, fits that, um, and how, and, and what the ambulance board, because again, the ambulance board, that's their, they're the ones that are gonna be, be paid and then it goes to council or the party.
Well, how, I know, through the budget process. See, I'm talking out loud, but I'm thinking, how are we going to get this thing in motion fairly quickly since we have about two weeks before July first? I mean, how, is, do we have an ambulance board meeting coming up, or?
Are we, the ambulance board only meets every quarter, but we can meet at half.
For exigent, exigent circumstances. I mean, this, I feel fills that definition.
Me too, I mean, we.
I mean, I, I do think.
I'd be happy all that, that of a meeting, I mean.
Reach out fast, I mean.
And, and see what people's availability is, I, the reason we haven't reached out was just because, but I think about a month ago, at a council meeting, it was discussed that the public safety committee was going to reach out, so I kind of, my perception of what was said was that they were going to be reaching out to, but I thought they did, and I, and then I.
Yeah, reached out and we were told that.
We were told that.
You guys were told by the attorney to have to come.
Yeah.
Our last meeting.
Carl has a meeting.
That was not on the agenda.
And that's, it sure was on the agenda. It was on there to speak about staffing for the fire department and ambulance. It sure was on that.
It was on a Thursday.
Was that a work session though?
No, we, it was not part of the comprehensive planning. It was the ambulance board meeting, right? It, it was the meeting and it was a part of the comprehensive planning, um, was to discuss, um, to have a comprehensive plan to cover staffing, to cover assets, to cover, um, all of those things. Um, that was what was on the agenda was to have a comprehensive plan.
Where did the, uh, email, the notice?
Yeah, I, I don't recall putting that on the.
We didn't, we didn't recognize that.
Yes, and I sent an invite and.
Yeah, I know we had an invite.
We, yeah, we saw the agenda, I just don't remember that being specifically on the agenda.
Yep, and that was in the meeting minutes for what, um, again, that was where, I mean, I addressed that with the council at that meeting.
Cause I thought that was going to be a meeting that we were gonna start working these issues out.
Correct.
And then next thing I heard that we were coming to the table, but nobody else was coming.
That's correct.
For that.
Four of us, it showed up, and we did, no one else.
The agenda was to, we wanted to touch, the public safety was to touch base with the trustees to see if there was going to be a signature acknowledgement of the, um, of the twenty eight. And then the other part of it was to discuss a comprehensive planning, um, to work with either what we would do individually or just doing some brainstorming to come up. Um, I had reached out to another fire department and talked to their chief, um, they had given me someone that we worked with, um, to go over staffing, to go over, um, equipment, um, to go through the inventory, um, and just looking at overall, uh, bettering the, the relationship between, um, the department, um, the city as a whole, and the, and the trustees, so. And I just had it on there, said comprehensive planning, um, was a part of that.
That's, that's pretty big though, isn't it?
Yeah, that's.
I think if we would've known more, then we probably wouldn't have been here.
Well, if.
I didn't, I didn't see it that way.
That's why I ran in.
If it was an agenda, it would've had agenda items on it, correct?
We had it on the.
Well, I'd like to see it.
Because I think, um, from this point forward, I mean, let's not continue the pissing practice. I just think we need to just get moving, boots on the ground and start, cause this is, this is an emergent issue. We need to get, we need to get resolved ASAP.
So I'll resend that email because I did have that, um, under that section or what was on the agenda. I had the description of what the comprehensive, what to talk about, but all parties have to agree before you can invite those individuals to come in. And again, there's a cost to have them do that. Um, it's not gonna be a fix, um, unfortunately, with the staffing. Um, but, I mean, again, the sooner we can all come to the table, then we just need to get it, get that resolved, yeah.
Okay.
Public safety needs to kind of get with the chief and try to pull this together, thank you.
We can give it.
All right, anything else?
Do that and then I'll make sure I resend all the information that I sent.
Right. Okay, we're at seven twenty-three, and we'll come back in a few minutes for the regular council meeting.
But do I?